We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you would do the roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Edinger?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Yep.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
Let's rise for the invocation. We have Pastor Ron Hunter with us tonight.
Holy Father, thanks for a great day like this. When democracy is on display for us to participate in and enjoy and the rest of the world to observe. In your word, you ask us to pray for those who rule over us and so, tonight, we appreciate the fact that government is at work. These men and women faithfully serve in our community. And I would ask that you would not only guide them as they hear and decide, but Father, would you bless them and their families? And I ask that in it all, our community will be at peace and will be blessed. I ask all of this in the wonderful name of Jesus who is the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Woody, let us in the pledge, please.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda. We have a public comment period now. Anyone wishing to come and address the council on city business shall have three minutes to do so. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council?
Never seen you ever, huh?
Yeah.
I'm really tired, I'm sorry. I just came back from home and my dog's getting radiation. Hope I can keep it together. Watch that clock, Renata. Mr. Mayor, Council. Last night's meeting, I thought was really good regarding midtown parking and the midnight parking situation. I thought it was, I thought there were a number of issues that were addressed really well. And I want, the reason I'm speaking this evening is I want to put an issue on the, on the public record, and that's the lighting of alleyways. And it was discussed, particularly the separation of zoning commercial and residential regarding Third Street and, Third Street and the Third Street corridor and the Fourth Street corridor. And it was mentioned that staff would deal with this issue, with the lighting issue. And year after year after year, and I don't want to mention how many years, Ron can remember, I've addressed, I've addressed the issue of light trespass and the issue of commercial, keeping commercial lighting out of residential neighborhoods. And I mean, years. And it's time for the city to adopt an ordinance that protects residential properties from light intrusion, and I don't care if it's from commercial or residential. Personally, a lot of us are stuck with lights from our neighbors that keep us awake at night, that prohibit us from enjoying our backyards in the summertime. It, and Chief White will probably, sorry, Chief White, will probably disagree with me, but we didn't have any problems with burglaries until where I lived, until they put in really bright lighting, and then the guys didn't have to use flashlights, they had two hands to do everything. And that was the beginning of some of the burglaries in the neighborhood. There were like two or three. But, and I understand that, that lighting and safety issues are, you know, supposedly go hand in hand, but they're different forms of lighting. But please, can we please finally ask staff to address the issue of a lighting standard? I would be happy to work with whoever's on staff who's going to address it. I would cite that Sun Valley has adopted a dark sky ordinance. Heaven only knows, I can't see that's ever even feasible for this town, but even maybe a smidgen of that lighting ordinance would be appropriate. And let's protect the, let's protect the housing from, our houses from, from light intrusion and light trespass. It's an easy thing to do, and lighting does not have to be garish, doesn't have to flood anybody's, anybody else's property, but I just wanted it on the record so that we can finally get the ball rolling for this. I don't know what the policy is for the city as far as, as far as getting the city to, Renata. Please. As far, as far as, as far as, I don't know, I don't know how to bring up a request for an ordinance change or an ordinance addition, or, I don't know how to do that anymore. You don't have a policy manual. Hopefully, you'll get a policy manual. One of these days, it tells citizens how to go about changing, instituting change or addressing the change issue besides coming down here. This is daunting to a lot of people. You know, it takes a lot to get up here, I gotta tell you. You know, you're all seated, that's a different deal. But, at any rate, my suggestion to all of you is please, put your heads together and, Mr. Mayor, let's lead, lead on with this one. And let's finally get this issue addressed after, how many years, Ron? Don't mention it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And please, before the 11th, the meeting on the 11th, let's have something that says we have to do this, this, and this, okay?
Meeting on the 11th of?
Don't you have?
Of Ignite?
Huh? Yeah. What's the meeting on the 11th? I'm sorry, I'm just addled on this. I'm so tired.
I think 11th is Veterans Day. Yes.
Well, yes, it is. It's not November, it's the December meeting. Is that Ignite?
We've noted, we've noted what you'd like to see and we'll, we'll move it forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These chairs aren't that comfortable, they look. I have a question. I know that we're working on the comp plan, and I would like to invite Hillary to come up and address that maybe this is an issue when the public gets involved in the comp plan, because I know that's one of the things I've read. Maybe this could be something that the public would talk about with regards to the upgrade. I mean, I don't know, does it fit there? Okay, so she's saying yes. You don't have to come up. But I think, Suzy, that, that would be the place, because I know they're planning a huge public outreach for the comp plan update, and we'll keep you informed. Well, I don't know yet. Has the date been set? No?
We're working on scope.
Oh, see, okay. So here we go. I know, so it's a date future, uncertain future.
But it will happen.
They've been saying that for, they've been saying that for way too many years that we don't want to mention, right, Ron? Yeah.
Well, I'm feeling really positive.
Well, I'm glad you are.
I will see to it. And I want you to, and I'm gonna invite you to show up so that you can have your input as well, because I think that's important.
At the comp plan hearings?
At the meetings with the public, yes.
Seems to me I did that. I'm only, I'm issued, I'm interested in lighting before the comp plan. You can adopt that ordinance before the comp plan. Remember, the ordinances count. The comp plan is just a little freeway as to how the city wants to look in the future. The ordinances are what count.
Okay.
So let's get the ordinance first, please. And the comp plan can come, besides, you have to, legally, you have to redo it every seven years anyway, and you're behind the ball. Thank you.
She just ordered you, and she pointed your, her finger right at you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up and address the council? If not, we will move on to our presentations. The first presentation is a presentation on the skate park. I don't know if the skate park folks are here tonight. I don't see them, so we will move on to, Police Chief White has a presentation on the
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let me open this thing up real quick. The police department is looking to change the design of our badge. And before we get into that, I want to give you just a quick history lesson. These are some of the badges that we have on the halls of the police department currently. We have, whoops, there we go, some from the early 1900s. This is the way the badges looked back then. We have some just after World War II. Our current badge was designed and adopted in the early 1970s. Over the past year roughly, though, the Police Association has led an effort to update our badge, and there's a couple reasons for that, and then I'll get into those here real briefly. The, first of all, the manufacturer keeps making the badges smaller. They look more like, actually look exactly like the resort security badges at this point. They're, they're not as, like I said, the size has changed, so they're a little bit smaller than they were currently. And then also, in our current uniforms, there's a gold versus silver markings on our uniforms, and so, anybody of the rank of lieutenant or above is gold, and the officers and sergeants are silver. And so, we wanted to get away from that difference in color there and just have everyone look the same. We took a vote in the sworn members, of all the sworn members, and there was a total of six that wanted to keep our current design. All the rest of the sworn members wanted to go to a different badge. Almost everyone wanted to keep the same patch that we have currently, just a subdued patch that we've always had on our, on our jackets and that sort of thing, but add a different badge design. These badges cost $75 per badge. What we are planning to do is have officers purchase their old badge if they would like to, and we think the majority of them will. Some will actually purchase more than one badge. For instance, a sergeant that got, who currently has a badge, might want to purchase an officer badge also for the retirement plaque or whatnot, and lieutenants might want all three ranks. And then put that revenue towards the, offset the cost of the new badges. The Police Officer Association thinks that $65 for the purchase of the old badge is appropriate, and $75 for a new badge. So, really, the cost of the police department's gonna be negligible. The wallet badges that we carry, we're planning to kind of phase those in over the several years, because frankly, we really don't use those as often as we do the shirt badges. For instance, we use them for court and things of that nature. So the cost of the badge program really is gonna be negligible. Typically, we spend about $2,000 a year on patches, and the badges is significantly less, about $1,000, but the total cost for this program, we estimate to only be about $1,500 total. Once again, this is a Police Officer Association-led effort, and this is in a uniform. I wish we could find a better-looking model, but anyway, I had a shirt handy, so we threw the patches on there, and this is what the uniform would look like.
Chief, I had a question that's just a little off-base from this, but as far as, as numbers, so you have your K number, right?
Yes, sir.
K whatever. Do those, do those rotate, or how do you assign those out? When someone leaves, is someone eligible to get another number? Do you ever retire numbers?
We do. We have two retire, or numbers that have been retired. Obviously, K27's been retired, and also 57 for my cryo check. The remaining numbers are reused. I'm, I don't know how many chiefs they've had, but there's been a bunch of K1s. We just recently, though, had to go over K99, so we actually have a K101, I think is the newest person. At some point, we'd like to get to the point where we no longer reuse numbers, because it becomes confusing for personnel issues. You know, if I have a report that was written by a K, and I'm just gonna make a number up, K50 several years ago, there might be a new K50 now. Over the past several years, we've had also where you, if you promote serge, well, sergeants to a degree, but usually lieutenants and above, they would change their K numbers. So the assistant chiefs are K, well, three and four, or Lee Brainerd chose to keep his old K number, so he's still K11. And anyway, so typically, you keep your K number until the point where you get promoted to lieutenant.
Okay. I think everyone likes the badge, Woody?
So, a couple questions. So, we do badges every year. I think when I started doing the billing, I asked you, it was $2,000.
You purchase some every year for new hires, and then they get damaged, you know, you go over a wall and they get scruffed up, or for whatever reason, they get messed up on the pavement or something like that, or they just break, a little backing on them comes off, and so the badge goes flopping off, and so we do purchase them.
So it's just a kind of a yearly thing?
Yes, sir.
Every year? And then on the number, the K numbers, I always thought that that was geared, I never thought about your side, I was thinking about the public side, because we kind of got to know people by their K number, because name tags aren't always, you know, last names, right? But that's not necessarily true, is what you're saying.
I don't, I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
Was there a question in there? I think I drifted. I always thought of the K number, I knew the guys by their K numbers, right? And then, that was for, I thought the public was the K number. You're saying, no, that was internal more, so...
Sure. Well, a lot of times, if, if a citizen asks us for our information, we'll give a K number and a last name.
Okay.
We, we give both. We have so many people now, I don't know all the K numbers. I don't think Yulhaun Schmitz in the back of the room would know our new hires' K number, but anyway, so we have both. We don't put the K numbers on the badges, just because to customize them to that degree makes them a bit more expensive, and so, we typically don't.
I must be flashing back to the 80s or something. You knew everybody's K, oh, they all had charge accounts at our restaurant, and we used the K number. Duh! Then I didn't have to know their name. I knew there was something connected here. Sorry, Chief.
So, the, the police officer that has the dog, his number is?
Actually, it's Lieutenant Tilson, who's K9.
K9, oh.
Yeah, the other two, the other K9 handlers, they, yeah, they had different numbers, sir.
I, I beat Councilperson Gookin to that, because I know.
No, I was just wondering if, like, if someone's from K50 to K60, are they eligible as a receiver unless you tell them, the judge before, you know, they can receive? I'm sorry, that was a football joke, but that's what I think of when I think of these numbers. It's kind of the same thing. You're K1, it's kind of like being K7, you're the quarterback, I don't know.
Right. Are we looking for a motion, or is this just information?
It's just election night banter, is what I'm...
We're all...
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Woody, are you up? Is it consent calendar time?
Oh, is it that time?
Yeah, it is that time.
Let me find out where I'm at here. I'm drifting today. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar as presented, including Resolution Number 18058.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had, there were some concerns raised after an item that we passed in General Services regarding maintenance for, for the Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive, and I wanted to have, yes, the approval of the, it's Item F, if you're looking at the agenda. Approval memorandum of understanding with Idaho Parks, Department of Parks and Recreation for maintenance of the trail and parkway located along East Lakeshore Drive, and I received an email from former Parks Director Doug Eastwood, who had some concerns, and I thought maybe Bill could address some of these concerns regarding maintenance along the shoreline. So, at General Services, you told us that none of these issues, you didn't see them coming up over $300, that we would, that what we would have to do if it came any more than that, you'd let us know. But yet, this shoreline thing causes me some concern, so can you clear it up for me and other council? Thank you.
So, I reached out to Randall Butt, who was involved with the state parks, and that's the gentleman that Doug referenced, about his observations from Potlatch all the way to Higgins. Our portion, where it stops at Silver Beach, there's a small section where the public and the private beach owner access that beach, and that edge of that trail has a little bit of failure. In Doug's email, he suggested shoreline failure and trail failure and scary words failure, right? And so, it wasn't that bad. And in fact, we've already got in place, and I've talked with Tim Martin, about putting in a curb line, cutting out the broken-off asphalt and repressing that. So, it's not, it's not a big fix, and Randall didn't think it was a big deal either. He did tell me, though, in an email, which I think I shared with you, that there were some others that were really a concern of his that were further down the road than ours.
Nothing over $300 to fix, though?
Well, it's, it's not, that's not the way the MOU's written. It's that, it's not nothing over $300. We will assume the responsibility of anything over $300. For example, we just did the pump-out on that outhouse structure. It was $350. And so, all they're doing is, is anything that's over that amount, they would like us to pick up the tab. They'll pick up the fertilization, you know, the sprinkler repair, the porta potty, toilet paper, that kind of stuff, the cleaning supplies, they will do all that. But anything above those routine maintenance stuff, they're asking us to step up, and that's what that's designed to do.
And you looked at it, and it looks, aside from what you said, we're not, we're not getting something that we're gonna be like, oh my gosh, a headache later?
No, because, you know, and if, in fact, that, that edge was on a, on a side that was really steep, we'd have some concern. But you may have been there, and in fact, that grade is really soft, and it's not a big problem. Now, the state, some years back, did, from where the Rutledge Trailhead is, that big steep embankment, they put in a lot of riprap. And that's, and I went to go look at that, and I walked through there, and it's holding very well. So that's not a problem at all. So that was addressed some years back.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you, thank you for...
Are you comfortable?
Yes, I am. I just, I wanted to bring that up, because he raised it, and it was like, whoa, I didn't even consider that when it came to us, so...
Well, I had walked it prior, when we were working the MOU out, and I, and I had seen that, and I didn't think it was a big deal. And so, I didn't think that it was anything to bring to anybody's attention. If we had some real undermining with the lake was coming through there and eroding away things, certainly, we would address that before we attempted to strike a deal with the state.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, good to know you're on top of it. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements? Any member of the council have an announcement? Kiki?
I just wanted to bring up one thing for the public and for the rest of council. The week before last, Hillary Anderson and I worked together to gather a group of about 16 leaders from throughout the community and to discuss the conclusion of the Performing Arts Center feasibility study. So, what happened there is there were clarifications regarding funding mechanisms, other facility studies that had gone on, other organizations' expansion plans, drive times, potential partnerships, a lot more detail and clarification of questions that the consultants had included in their study. So the, the next steps to that is that an addendum was being created to add to that study, and it, along with the final report, the other area, including North Idaho College's event center study, other studies that have been done on a theater group, on the modern theaters facility, will all be linked in one location on the city's website, so that anybody who, in the future, is looking at this kind of a project or looking at a feasibility study for another facility can use this body of work and a kind of a comprehensive one location format. So I just, that should be up within about, about a week, I think. So, just letting you know that that's what happened, and all of the questions and the answers that were discussed there will be listed in sort of a meeting summary format.
Great. Thank you. Any other member of the council have an announcement? Ron?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to encourage everybody that hasn't voted yet to go out and vote. You've got till 8 o'clock, and if you go vote, be sure and vote for Dan Gookin for County Clerk.
Thank you, Ron.
Can we do that?
He just did. Any other member of the council have anything? If not, I have some appointments. I would like to appoint Bridget Hill to the Park and Rec Commission, Scott Hoskins to Ignite CDA, and Zach McKimmy as a CDA TV Committee student rep alternate.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to other business. Midtown parking study. Hillary, thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good evening.
Just a second, Hillary.
Of course. Thank you. If I could just interrupt, I, I did verify this with legal counsel, that there isn't, according to statute, a conflict that exists, but I wanted to share that I do own property that's within the boundaries of the study that we are gonna be discussing here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, several of you heard a lot of this presentation last night. We did have the public meeting here in the Library Community Room, and thank you, Mayor, for moderating the meeting. I think it was great. We had about 50 people in total, about 30 to 35 members of the community that were either residents or property or business owners in the midtown, and then we had, of course, a few council members, as well as the mayor. We had some parking commission members and some staff, so it was a great discussion. So, I'm gonna kind of walk you through the parking study that was done. It was completed in September. It was conducted this summer, and this was something that was, basically, a lot of the residents and some of the property owners in midtown continued to talk about there was concerns with parking in midtown and wanting to figure out, is there a solution for that? And so, brought in Rich and Associates, Ignite, and the city hired them to evaluate the parking situation in midtown, to evaluate what is the existing parking, as well as what are the future needs for parking in this area. And as you can see on the map here, the northern boundary that we looked at was Harrison Avenue, southern boundary was Foster Avenue, and then the core of it was really Fourth Street, and then Fifth, I'm sorry, Third Street here, and then Fifth on the east side. The core area is outlined here in red, and so that's really the Boise to Reed, right in the center, where the majority of the restaurants and the, the businesses that draw a lot of the community members. In total, it's nine blocks, and so, the study looked at both the full area, as well as looked at kind of the core area, in terms of, as I mentioned, parking supply, utilization, and the current and future parking demand, so...
Just, just to provide a reference for people who don't know the street names?
Yes.
So that's like, Reed is, is close to where Capone's is, or it's south of where Capone's is?
Right. So we have Capone's is right here by Roosevelt.
Okay.
So...
And then Boise is up where Anthony's, or Angelo's is, I mean?
Angelo's is closer here to Montana.
Okay, so that, but that's the, the range we're talking.
Correct. That is, yes. So as I mentioned, we already had the public meeting last night. The mayor had suggested that we do that, rather than coming straight to you with the study findings, just to make sure that there weren't any other concerns or suggestions for potential solutions. And so, I think it was a great, great turnout last night, great discussion, as I mentioned, and we'll talk through that shortly. The work was really done in June, and so, Annika was here for a couple days, and she was here, you know, the two days where she was actually in the field, and they were counting the vehicles, they were looking at the turnover, they were evaluating how the parking is being used, and how long the vehicles stayed in those locations. And then, as I mentioned, we received the report in September. So, the findings, the total parking spaces in the area, and this includes public and private, is 948 spaces. And as you can see here, there is a distribution, of course, the majority of them are privately owned, and the, the ratio that Rich and Associate recommends is a 50/50. So we're definitely under that. We're about 35% for publicly-owned parking, and then it's about 65% for the privately-held parking areas. And then, as you would guess, the core area is really where we're seeing the highest utilization of parking. People like to be conveniently parked. They like to park right in front of the businesses that they're going to, they don't like to have to walk long distances, especially if they're there at night. The peak occupancy that we were seeing in the parking study was really the lunchtime, because that's when most of the businesses are open, the daytime users, as well as the restaurants, and so, saw a lot of that. And there still was, even though, you know, it seems that there's a parking issue, and we know that there are parking impacts in the residential areas, there is a surplus. So overall, there's a surplus of 435 spaces. Again, this includes the privately-owned, as well as the publicly-owned. And then in the core area, there are 88 parking spaces in surplus. And then it, for nighttime, 5:00 PM was the peak time that the parking was really in the most demand, and that was at a, more of the 26%. They recommend, for parking management, I mean, you really want to get to 85% occupancy, and so we do have quite a bit of surplus, but we know we need to do some things with the parking management and kind of distribution of the parking as well. So, one thing that came up last night, they had asked to kind of really look at the maps from the parking study, and I apologize, this is hard to read, even zoomed in like this, but I broke the map in half.[1694.16] So the left side is the north half, and this right side of the screen is the southern half. And so we just kind of did the little dividing line here. The orange is privately owned, and the green is publicly owned. And so these are the two lots. This is the one on Third, this one on Fourth Street. And the numbers on this map reflect how many parking spaces are in each. So some of the things that you can see in the parking study was, she kind of went through, and she did count the number of vehicles that remained in certain areas. And so this map reflects how many vehicles were there over two hours. And so the numbers is how many vehicles were in those locations. So as you can see up here, we had up at Birch, there was 10 cars that were parked for longer than two hours. We had down at Montana, there was five in this location parked for more than two hours. Roosevelt had seven, and then Reed had 12. And so that's something that can be concerning, especially if those are parked near homes, that the residents may get a little frustrated and give us calls, which has happened. This next map shows the peak occupancy. So again, really showing where these vehicles are parked during the peak occupancy. These are the most popular spots. This is right next to Junk, right across from Capone's. So the, this kind of fuchsia red is 85% to 100% utilized. And then kind of the parking spaces here behind Headland, some on the street are very popular, and then again up here to the north. I guess actually, let me go back here, too, because you can see that there are quite a bit of available parking spaces, because I think this is really critical to show. So this is only being 50 to 74% utilized. This is one of our public parking lots. The one on Third is 0 to 49%. So quite a bit of parking available still in that area during that peak timeframe. So what we talked about last night were the recommended solutions. And so a lot of these did come from the parking study and from their recommendations. But some of these were also just from discussions with the mayor and administration and staff, just what are things we really can do? And a lot of this was, were things that came up from the stakeholders in the area at the meeting that was in June. And the first thing that I think is really an easy win for us is really to address the parking lots that are publicly owned right now. We recognize that there's a lack of lighting, which makes them feel unsafe. And so a lot of people don't want to park there, especially at night, if they don't feel like they can safely get back to their car when they're done having dinner or working. The striping in the parking lots is not efficiently striped right now. We know we could gain potentially 20 new parking spaces in both of those lots if we were to kind of realign the striping and kind of redesign that, as well as if we can acquire a little bit of extra land. And then the asphalt is in disrepair, and that's in the alley, as well as those public parking lots. So that's one of the critical items here. As Susie Snedeker had mentioned in the public comments, lighting is a big issue. So while we want to make sure it's well lit, so people feel safe, we don't want to have it so it's negatively impacting the neighbors. So that is something that we'll make sure to address, is that it's the appropriate type of lighting that's not having light trespass, so shielded, directed, and low enough intensity. So the other thing that's really critical is to figure out, are there areas we can acquire additional parking lots or spaces for publicly owned parking in the Reed to Boise corridor? Because that is, of course, the most popular area. And then we definitely need to improve the signage that's there. A few of the, the community members last night noted that they weren't even, they didn't remember seeing signage for the publicly owned lots. And I've had a few other people in passing say, "I don't, I don't remember ever seeing that." So we can do better. I think that's something that we need to add signage. Maybe it's creative. We know we need to add more detail so it shows it's public and it's free, so that people understand they can park there and really encourage the cars to park, especially the employees and the business owners to park in those lots, so that they're not parking on the street and taking away valuable on-street parking. The alley lighting also needs to be improved, so this one kind of ties really well into number one, that we want to make sure that people can go safely from the businesses. So for example, if you're parked at Capone, or you're eating at Capone's, you're parked in one of those parking lots, you might want to take the alley. You want to feel safe going through there. And so she had suggested as well, kind of lighting the alleys, but alley activation, just making them more desirable. You could even do mural art or things like that. Creating residential parking zones and enforcement, this was definitely a big thing that has come up, and this was recommended as well in the parking study, was maybe there's areas that we want to identify for residential only, that they would have permits similar to the Fort Grounds neighborhood. And so the thing with that is we would need to make sure that we have the enforcement built in so that it becomes effective. And so those are things we're discussing, you know. If we proceed with this, how would we structure that to make sure that the enforcement happens so that we have compliance? And that's really critical. There are, the areas where we would do that would be on the south side of Reed, and then on Montana, on both sides of the street between Fourth and Fifth Streets. So, you know, not the entire area, but just the areas where we did see most of the cars were parked beyond two hours and where there's, there have been impacts to the residential areas.
Hillary, you might just clarify, on the, on Montana, it would be from, from the alley?
Alley back.
Alley to Fifth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For the residential.
Appreciate that. Then we also talked about the need to work on shared use, parking in private lots. And actually, there was a great conversation after where Troy Timison was able to talk to, was it the Lutheran Church, to see is there an opportunity there to maybe use their parking lot? It's not used all the time, except for during services or other events. And so I think that's, that's a great opportunity as well. Talk to some of these people that own the private parking lots and see if they're amenable to providing some kind of shared parking. Loading zones for delivery trucks was a big issue last night as well, and we heard that some of the impacts were understated in the report, as well as, I think, during the presentation. So just wanted to make sure that that is clear to the council, that that's something we need to look at for midtown for parking, because it does impact some of the, the businesses, but more so some of the residents, where if the, the loading, or the, the delivery trucks park for a while while they're unloading, and they might be blocking someone out from trying to leave their home to go to work or go somewhere else. And so that's something we talked about. Is there an opportunity for designating loading zones and identifying certain areas where that would need to take place, or possibly having that take place on Fourth Street in certain areas, if that'll allow for traffic to still travel around? Marketing of parking lots, this is another recommendation from the parking study. So that's more just getting the word out, you know, having some kind of maps and information at the visitor's center, things on the website, maybe having it on, we already have information on the city's website, but kind of beefing that up and doing a little bit more with kind of the pamphlets and helping encourage people to park in midtown. Another thing related to that that came up last night was, wouldn't it be great if the businesses and the residents started working together and having kind of more of an association, a committee that gets together and supports each other? Well, if there was a website developed for the midtown district, that kind of thing could also promote the park, parking areas. Identify future parking, public parking lots. And so this is something where beyond the five and 10 years, where are we going to create more public parking in the midtown area? And then lastly, number 10, all of these kind of lead to that, but really wanting to get closer to that ratio of 50/50%. So the city needs to increase the amount of parking that we own in midtown to really have effective parking management. So as I mentioned, we had that great meeting last night, went a little bit over the, the one-hour timeframe, but I think it was, it was great that we had everybody in the room together, talking about the issues and the solutions. I think a lot of the things that I just hit on under the, the recommended solutions were brought up. I think some of the biggest things were the residential parking impacts, the freight trucks delivering, and, and the need for the loading zones, the lighting, the signage needs to be better for our public parking lots, making that more visible, and then acquiring more public parking, as well as the shared parking. So I think that concludes that. Our next steps, so obviously, we have the presentation to you tonight. Also be going to Ignite on the 21st of November to give them the same presentation. And then if council does direct staff to start working on that parking plan, we would be working on that from now until February, and then coming back to you with a presentation in the second meeting in February of the parking plan. And that's really where we get in kind of the, the specifics, the nitty-gritty on what that would look like for the lighting and the signage, things like that. So the requested action this evening is to direct staff to develop a parking plan for midtown, and that concludes my presentation.
So a couple of things that, that I wanted to add is that this, this parking study is, is a good study. It does have some flaws in it, and I think we noted last night that there are some flaws. I think the fact that you put Safeway in there as a parking lot, and that's used to calculate somewhat of a surplus in that area, Yates, too, probably if you calculate that. So that skews the report a bit. I think you have to realize that, you know, Annika was here for a couple of days and put that whole thing together. And I think it is a good base report to go from, but I think it's, it's up to us to take that report from there and then glean it to exactly what we need to, to see in midtown for that midtown parking plan. So it, so it is a, a good report, but as long as we identify that there are some flaws in it and we work through those. So that's one point I wanted to make. And then on the residential zones, and a gentleman last night brought it up at the meeting, it really is our responsibility, and it is in a document that, that says, you know, when, when we created that, that commercial core in there, that we did have a responsibility to protect the residential neighborhoods. And I think that's why we're really looking at the, at those residential zones, to help protect the, the neighborhood, too. And so that, and, and we understand that, and that's an obligation that we take seriously. But those, those action plans, I think they're all doable, they're all achievable. 50/50 is going to be a little tough, but you know, it's not, we're not going to get to 50/50 in two years, or maybe even three years, but it's a goal four, five to 10 years down the road. And when we come up with this midtown parking plan, we kind of have to be future forecasters. What could potentially happen in five years, or 10 years, or something like that? And it's interesting, too, that you talk about signage, is that there was someone that had lived in the midtown area, I believe she said, for 37 years, and she didn't realize that the Fourth Street parking lot was public.
Right.
So that's kind of on us. You know, we're not really identifying that this is, this is free public parking. So those are just a couple of the points that I got from last night's meeting. And I have recruited Captain Dave Hagar to assist Hillary and her team in drafting that plan. Dave has some experience with, in his previous position with parking and enforcement and those kind of things. So he's a, a good member of, of the team to help draft that plan. So others with questions for Hillary? Woody?
So this kind of brings up that infill, we have these infill regulations. And I get it, we're running out of room, so things are going to be redone. Will that, will we put parking back into that? Do you see that for midtown?
Well, the infill district already has parking requirements for new development, or if a building is expanded by 25% beyond what exists currently. So yeah, that's already in place. The goal with not having an overabundance or, you know, overrequiring parking is otherwise you're never going to have anything happen in some of these vacant buildings. And so it's really trying to find that balance between oversupply of parking and the cost of land for building parking, especially if they have an existing building. So that's really when the, the infill overlay district was created and the regulations were adopted in 2004 by the council, really trying to recognize that balance. So really, let's get some of the vacant buildings filled, do the adaptive reuse, and then encourage new development. Some of the parking ratios are reduced from other zoning districts, but some of them are not. So I think it's just more that a lot of the buildings sat vacant, now they're flourishing, because they're full and there's popular restaurants. And so I think we're seeing some of the impacts from the parking in the neighborhoods where maybe the buildings were vacant for so long, and they didn't see the impacts previously.
I think that's very true, you know. Do we have a 50/50 downtown? We don't? 50 private, 50 public?
You know, I haven't looked at those numbers. I'm not sure if Troy would know that. It's going to be change, it might be getting closer to that with our new parking structure and the key.
Yeah, it's moving pretty close.
So it, we probably are, because there really, a lot of the parking lots are now being turned into development, the privately owned ones.
Yeah.
But yeah, probably are.
I think the, the concern seemed to be that as success become, you come more successful, we need more parking, and the neighbors shouldn't be taking the brunt of it. But, you know, we have Third Streets all one way, and there's no parking on Third, but there's some parking on Fourth. So the impact seems to go east rather than west.
Right.
If I'm not right. But we have those parking lots. And you said, I think, last night that we could better make it more productive, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could reconfigure some of those lots. And if we were able to obtain a, a small strip of land on the Third Street side, we could add 20 spots to that lot, because you'd have parking on each side, and then you'd have a road down the middle.
Okay.
So there's some things in, in play right now, where, that we're working towards, that could add, definitely add some more spaces. I think as we, Ignite has an RFP out, Request for Proposal, for their land right now, and when we're talking about that, I would think that the conversation of increasing the public parking needs to, to be had in that conversation, you're talking about the RFP, too. So there's some opportunities to create some, some more public parking, definitely. Perfect. Kiki?
So Hillary, this plan that we're going to direct you to develop, you'll be looking at right now as a point in time, based on this last June. So how far out will you take a look at this plan for your achieving of 50/50? I mean, is it a one-year currently, five-year? And how will that blend with a comprehensive plan?
The parking study had recommended that we look at kind of the five and the 10-year timeframes for the parking plan, but we could also look beyond that, if that's a desire of the council, just to kind of say long-term. But I don't know that we would be able to be as specific. It's really difficult when you get too far out to be so specific, but we certainly could. The comprehensive plan is a 20-year plan, but one of the things we'll be doing with that update is having more of a focus on neighborhoods and districts, so commercial districts. And so that would definitely blend well, having that in the comp plan as well.
Any other question? Dan?
Well, I would just comment that I also enjoyed the meeting last night. I've been to a lot of public meetings, and, and often, you know, something like this, there's an opportunity for some tension and for the folks who are getting impacted. I mean, they really feel the impact, but I, I felt like it was a great back-and-forth kind of a process and the, you know, and I appreciate that, you know, as far as the parking study on paper, you know, they can identify, you know, we've got X amount of surplus, and that means something, I guess, to them on paper, but to the people who live there, it was quite a bit, I mean, it's quite a bit different matter. And, but I'm also hopeful that because there is a, instead of all of the land being already built out and buildings there, and then what the heck do you do? We actually, there's quite a bit of open land, so there is some opportunity between the different entities involved with Ignite, which I'm on, and, you know, the Parking Commission. And so I feel like there, there is a real opportunity for people to cooperate, and the actual number of like streets and residences that are really impacted, you know, are not that great. So I've got to believe that, yes, we can come up with something and, you know, address the right kind of lighting and all of that, but I, I'm hopeful that it can be a good cooperative process, so.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're asking us to develop a parking plan, and I'd like to-
Tell them to.
For you to develop a parking plan. Us, the city, royal we, Dan. So I would like to, to bring up three issues that I think we need to address, and just see, throw them out there for council to bathe in. The first is, is our public parking lots, which I think is, to me, that's a big enchilada. The mayor says that, you know, people don't even know about them. So I think as a city, we need to sell the lots. I think we need to have proper signage. I mean, I would love to see huge neon sign, and this was brought up last night, you know, "Free public parking." Because seriously, driving down the road, you see all the nice restaurants, then we need to sell our parking, too. We need to do all the stuff you said, which is see if we can maximize the space in there, see if we can keep it lit. Lighting the alley, I think would also be a piece of that puzzle, to, to sell the parking lot. So I think that's, that's really important. Number two, I'd say is we need to respect the neighborhoods, which is in our code. And we need to figure out some way to restrict parking for them. I know it's been bandied about to have parking restrictions like they do in the Fort Grounds. I don't know how effective that would be as far as enforcement's concerned, and, but I don't know what, what other tools we have in the toolbox, because I'm, I'm just sitting up here. But you're the expert, and you know experts, to find out ways that we could have to dissuade people from moving into the neighborhoods, as we said, it moves east. So moving, we're moving on Fifth Street, on Reed, Montana, all those streets where people tend to park, when they could be parking in our glorious public parking spaces. Then I also think the other thing you mentioned is loading zone. We need to find out how feasible that can be and how we can get the delivery trucks to adhere to that, so that they're not blocking alleys, and they're not blocking residents, and they're not blocking the streets. I mean, there has to be some way to, someone's figured this out before. So I would say if I was going to, going to offer direction, it would be on those three items, selling our public parking, protecting the neighborhood, and then something about delivery zones. I don't know what the rest of council thinks, or maybe they have better ideas, but I'm throwing that out there.
And I think, Dan, all, all three of those ideas were, were in the, in the recommendations. So I, I think Hillary, moving forward with the plan, council is free to add anything from that, but you're going to work from those recommendations to, to develop that, to develop your plan based upon those recommendations. So all of those key points will be in the, in the plan. And I think all three of those things are covered.
Yeah, it's in there.
Somewhere in there. Okay.
I, I did it better, but yeah, there's-
Yeah, you did.
Sell it, advertise it.
You always do.
Yeah, three instead of 10, but you know, it's me.
Anyone else have anything for Hillary? Ron?
How many people know that that is a public parking?
You know, I'm not sure. We, I don't think we've ever done, maybe we should do a little survey, monkey survey to see how many people know that it exists.
Because I go down Fourth Street quite a bit. And lots of times, you know, there's nobody parked there. So, you know, I just wonder how many people know about the public parking. And I think like Dan said, you know, make a big sign.
All right, if we don't have any other questions for Hillary, we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to direct staff to develop a parking plan for Midtown.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that?
Just a clarification. So it's understood that this motion is to adopt those recommended solutions that were presented. Okay, that's what you intended, okay.
Well, not necessarily to adopt, but to direct staff in that direction.
That's the direction you're going. I just want to make sure that we're not being vague or anything. So that was the understanding. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Hillary. Now, we have Resolution Number 18-059, Contract with David Boyer for Public Art on the Seltis Way Roundabouts. Troy is our resident art expert.
Ouch. Good afternoon and happy election day. I have a council member on the dais that will help me with this. Mayor and council, I bring before you a great public piece of work involving a number of our constituents and a great subcommittee chaired by Teresa Rungy. Our chairperson of our committee is Jennifer Drake. This really is an active subcommittee that brings forward to you this recommendation. We are bringing before you tonight for your consideration a contract with David Boyer and the largest amount that we've ever done in public art of $160,000. Let me give you the process and all the work and hours and months that have gone into this. City of Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission issued a national request for artist qualifications on the 26th day of March for public art in the two traffic roundabouts located at the intersection of Seltis Way and Atlas, as well as the roundabout at Seltis Way and West Idlewood slash Grand Mill Lane. The roundabouts are approximately a mile and a half apart. They're about a quarter of a mile from the Spokane River. The call was managed through the city's account with CallForEntry.org, also known as CAFE, which is an online call to artist listings at that site. As noted in this request for qualification, the call was a two-step process. Interested parties were invited to submit their qualifications through this software, and then eligible submissions were reviewed by a selection committee, and six finalists would be chosen. To meet the qualifications, to get into this process, the artists were instructed to provide information regarding their experience in fabrication and installation, including permanent artwork suitable for the outdoor elements, and they must have met the minimum cost for art that they produced of $50,000. City received a total of 130 artist qualifications through this software, and after initial review, the artists who met the minimum qualifications were narrowed down to 97. The subcommittee then went to work multiple hours, working this list down to six, and that was an extensive day. Selection committee consisting of seven voting members, including citizens, art professionals, council member Evans, as well as our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Bill Greenwood, and three non-voting members of the Arts Commission, met on the 21st day of 2018, and they can tell you how many hours they put into whittling this down through the qualifications and the process. At that meeting, six artist finalists were selected to prepare proposals, budgets, and maquettes. I will show you the pictures of the artist finalists in just a moment. So they were requested to consider the following in the creation and the proposal. They were considering that the Spokane River is a major waterway connecting Lake Coeur d'Alene and Points West. They were to take into consideration our history, its future, and the region's natural resources. They were to take into consideration the significance of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, its history and its presence in our area, any thematic originality, especially in regard to the existing Coeur d'Alene Public Art Collection, regional history, and future of this great area. They were to take into consideration the fact that the city did not want to have a lot of maintenance, so maintenance was a big part of this, and appropriate consideration for the area's extreme seasonal changes. After receipt of the maquettes, the city then were placed on display in three separate locations in our great area, City Hall, Coeur d'Alene Public Library, and the Crox Center. We were there about a week at each of those locations, and thanks to our public and their comments, over 1,100 comments were received. Basically, they were voting on the ones that they liked the best. Following the close of that comment period, the selection committee went to work again on the first day of October to review the comments and any other considerations. Also in attendance at that meeting was Matt Gibb of Welch Comer Engineers, the design professional that the city and Ignite had on the Seltis Way project. He was available to answer any engineering-related questions. This committee then went to work and Skype interviewed all of these artists, with each artist conducting what they saw with their art, what they brought forward. They talked about their experiences and their vision. Following that, this committee then went to work, reviewed all of this information, including the discussion with the artists. And the voting members on this selection committee filled out a rating score sheet for each artist based on the artist's quality of the proposed art piece, the context, the structural, the integrity of that, the feasibility of building it, and whether the work represented this great area of Coeur d'Alene as community and considered its maintenance issues and successful completion of past projects. Reference checks were then done by the staff and some of the members of this subcommittee, seeking to confirm that the past projects had been done on time and with great detail. So as you can tell, we were considering everything in this major art opportunity. So that looked into the fabrication that was done at other installations, the total number of projects that these artists had done, and any durable, resistant materials that were used, any creativity on that side of it as well. The rating score sheets were tallied, and the high score was received, and that is by artist David Boyer. Swimming with Friends and Soaring with Friends. This is a picture on the screen. Mr. Boyer is from Reno, Nevada. His art proposals are what you see here. The selection committee was especially impressed with Mr. Boyer's interview, the research that he had conducted for this project, and the extremely positive responses received from his previous project references. Public comments received on Mr. Boyer's piece put him in the top three of those. Selection committee made a couple of additional suggestions in regard to this art proposal. The first was in regard to the kinetic nature of the piece. It was suggested to check with Mr. Boyer to see if he would be able to fabricate in a way to secure the pieces and keep them from moving in the event of strong winds. The artist has been contacted and has responded that while the pieces are kinetic in nature, rather than spinning around, they move very slowly in the direction of the prevailing wind, much like a weather vane. He noted that he has constructed similar pieces for the Reno and Colorado areas and has not encountered any problems. In Colorado, all of the pieces were required to withstand 80 to 100 mile an hour winds. So good work on that committee's part. Second suggestion from this committee was in regard to the bird sculptures. Based upon the public comments received, where some people thought that the birds were planes, it was suggested that Mr. Boyer revise the sculpture so that it looks more like a bird. He said that he'd be happy to do that. The recommendation of the selection committee was then presented to the Arts Commission at their meeting on the 23rd of October, and the commission voted unanimously to accept the recommendation of the selection committee and to recommend to you approval of this contract, Swimming with Friends and Soaring, Swimming with Friends and Soaring with Friends, in the amount of $160,000. The budget for this was a total of $175,000. We want to recognize the art funding that comes from the River District. Thus, these pieces are in the River District from Ignite CDA. So the other pieces that came forward, you may have seen as you went through the City Hall or to the library. This would be from artist Wenzia Zhang. This would be the piece from John Davis. Elan Everbuk. Ken McCall. And Alan and Mary D. Dodge were all maquettes that were done. So again, a great amount of work done by this committee. Public involvement was exceptional. I bring this forward, mayor and council, seeking approval for a contract with artist David Boyer to move forward on the Seltis Way Roundabout art pieces.
Questions for Troy on this? I know there was an awful lot of public involvement in it. I know from our staff, Amy Ferguson worked tirelessly on this whole process. So it was, it was really a great process, and I think it's a great piece, but I'm certainly, I'm not as art savvy as Woody is.
I just have a comment. I don't have a question. I just want to thank the committee. They were very long meetings, to be honest, exciting, what a great opportunity to be a part of Coeur d'Alene's history. And we had so many active volunteers that just gave hours upon hours. I'd like to give a special thank you to Teresa Rungy, who led this project extremely thorough. It's the first time that I've sat through Skype interviews with artists. And that added a real energy and insight into the project. So I would, you know, recommend we keep that tradition going. So anyways, a special thanks to Teresa and the full committee.
Thank you. Any other questions for comments? Dan?
I just want to make a comment that I didn't vote, because I don't think it's fair, because we make the final decision, but this was my favorite. Yeah.
All right, if there isn't any other questions, we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-059, A Contract with David Boyer for Public Art on the Seltis Way Roundabouts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Kukin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Troy. Move on to our public hearing tonight. This is public hearing A-3-18. It's a proposed 7.18 acre annexation from County Agricultural to City R8 located at 2008 1950 and 1914 Prairie Avenue. The applicant is Coeur d'Alene School District 271. Does any member of the council have a conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none, we will move forward to having Sean Holm give the presentation for the city.
All right, thank you, mayor. City council, give me a moment while I prep my PowerPoint. Okay, as the mayor had mentioned, there is a request tonight before council for annexation of 7.18 acres from County Agricultural to R8 in the city limits. They are made up of three parcels that are west of Ramsey Road, located south of Prairie, commonly known as 1914, 1915, and 2008 West Prairie. So the reason for the request is, everyone knows Coeur d'Alene's a popular place. We are growing quite quickly. Much of that development is happening on the north side of the city, and the school seeks to build a number of schools in the area, not necessarily all in city limits. But they have purchased this property for a future elementary school. Here is a picture of the subject property. See here, east to west is Prairie Avenue with Ramsey Road running north-south. This is the annexation map. It's yellow for the three lots that are under request. This is a definition of what R8 zoning is. It's also important to note that Planning Commission did hear a request for a special use permit for community education, and that was approved.
So we don't decide that?
You do not decide for the special use permit.
Okay.
Also note that it's not a building permit. It just would allow that type of use. There is another bite at the apple, although Planning Commission and City Council don't get, say, for a building permit, but we will look at access at that time. So there are four findings that need to be made for an annexation. The first is whether the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This property falls within the Ramsey Woodland Transition Area. It is contiguous with city limits. This is the map right here. You can see on the very north end of Coeur d'Alene, in white, this is the location of the subject property. It's important to also note that this is a transition area, and the number of building lots and general land use are expected to change greatly within our planning period. The definition of Ramsey Woodland today, describing it in 2007, that update is coming. And then Ramsey Woodland tomorrow, basically calling out largely that it's mostly a Coeur d'Alene Place Plan Unit Development with a variety of housing types, and the northern boundary is the edge of the community, and it offers opportunities for infill, which we have seen over the years, a number of annexations and PUDs. So this is the characteristics of Ramsey that are also identified in the comprehensive plan, as well as the goals and objectives that apply to this request.
It's true that the, that there's no sidewalk on the south side of Prairie.
On the south side? There is.
There is, okay.
Yes. Upon the time that it gets annexed and approved, assuming it gets approval, that would be upgraded to a 10-foot path. But right now, it's just a five-foot sidewalk.
All right, thank you.
I do have pictures of that for you. All right. So finding B9 is that public facilities and utilities are or not available and adequate for the proposed use. We did get feedback from all of our departments. Parks Department gave some advice about connecting the basketball court and bike racks together in the future. Katie Kosinski, urban forester, she is requiring street trees, which is a requirement anyway. If the Lakes Highway District does not want them within their right-of-way, the city will allow them to create a street tree easement on their property for those street trees. So stormwater will be addressed at the time of the permit, and all the stormwater must stay on-site. Streets. So there is a clarification here at the bottom. Feel free to read that. There was, I guess, the way that it was written, it could have been interpreted that somehow that Lakes Highway District would have veto power or some sort of control as to whether council would be able to annex this property if they did not approve access. That is not the case. Tonight, we are just looking at annexation of the property and whether the timing is correct to bring this into city limits. We are not approving a school site yet. That will come at the time of permit.
But that doesn't come to us?
That would, no, a building permit doesn't. At that time, assuming that their special use permit is still valid, it's considered a use by right through a special use permit. All right. So basically, what this is saying is that the site will have access to, through the future Mosel Drive, which is the, pardon me for a second, Vista Meadows, which is directly west of this property, is an approved R8 subdivision that will access Prairie or has received approval from Lakes Highway District. That road will access to the school, and that is where they were planning to gain most of their access. In the preliminary designs that the staff has seen off of Prairie, there was a write-in, write-out only that was proposed at that time. I wasn't privy to the meeting yesterday, so I won't be able to speak to what the decision was, although there are representatives here that can do that. But that was designed for staff as well as fire department access in the design that they had. So access doesn't necessarily have to come off of Prairie. It's dependent upon the design. So the fire department can, they can, as long as they can access the structure and pull their line within 150 feet of wherever that fire apparatus is, that will suffice for fire protection. So whether or not the school gets that access off of Prairie, the city really does not have a dog in that fight, quote unquote. We would like to see that happen, but we don't have control.
Sean, where's Mosel Drive?
Mosel is directly west. It has not been constructed yet. It's the property that abuts directly west, that is Vista Meadows. It's going to be constructed. We do have final plans in. I just got the landscaping plans the day before yesterday.
Does it go east-west or north-south?
North-south. So do you know where Vantage, Vantage Road or Drive, it's in Hayden directly, it lines up directly with where Mosel will be. I can show you that, if I remember, I was on water. I have a picture of it. This is Vantage right here.
It's across Ramsey.
Yes, on the other side. So it's directly west of, or behind this picture, back this direction where my mouse is.
And that's the pitiful little sidewalk that's already there?
That is the sidewalk, yes.
Sean, just correction, is it across Ramsey or across Prairie?
It's across Prairie.
Prairie, right, yes.
Now, is there, is there any planned street access elsewhere on the property?
To which part? Sorry, I didn't.
Well, so we have, we have this parcel that we're talking about. You talked about Mosel, which is to the, to the...
It is proposed to be right here.
Okay.
Yes. This is Vantage.
Right. Oh, there it is.
And then Mosel would run down and connect ultimately into Coeur d'Alene Place 30th.
Now, what about any access on the south side of the property?
That is forthcoming as Coeur d'Alene Place moves north. It hasn't been constructed yet.
And jumping ahead a couple of cards, you'd mentioned under wastewater, Pronghorn and Cedar View. Where's that?
Those are streets that will be constructed inside of Vista Meadows, which the outline is right here. It's like an upside-down T.
Oh, so they, so they will be abutting the property at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where the access was. The approval, the, for Vista Meadows included, it was a deviation from subdivision standards that allowed for flexibility in the design to allow only one access from the east-west road that will be built inside of Vista Meadows to have the children access the site only on one side. So there wouldn't be sidewalks on both sides of the street for that area that enters into the school property.
And theoretically, in the future, when, when all that green pasture down there is going to be developed, which is, which is coming to us eventually, there's going to be connectivity to that as well?
Correct.
Okay.
That is where wastewater is actually proposed to go through. So we may see a street or at least a wastewater line sooner than later.
Okay. And I just want to let council know why I'm bringing this up, is that there was a concern expressed to me today. The editor of the paper phoned me. Because at last night's meeting, the east side, our, no, it's Lakes Highway District, they met, and they had some concerns about access off Prairie for this parcel. And so there was a lot of phone calls made. I talked to Dr. Cook from the school district. I also talked to a couple commissioners from, from the Lakes Highway District, because this is just, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. And they're here. Actually, Diane is here, and so is Eric Shanley from the Lakes Highway District, in case we have any questions about the concerns and what's happened and what's transpired last night, and what'll probably be in the paper, not on the front page, but it'll be in the paper tomorrow, regarding access to this property off Prairie.
Correct.
So I just want to let council know that was, that was happening, and I was privy to that because I'm on KMPO. And so we can, we can bring that up, and we can discuss some of the finer points, but I want you to finish your, your findings or your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear to council that that didn't necessarily prohibit or...
Right.
Your guys' decision of whether this property should be incorporated into our city limits or not. All right. Get back to water here. All right. So water is provided by Hayden Lake Irrigation District. They have provided a well-serve letter. That is attached at the end of your staff report. And when it went to Planning Commission, it had a conditional well-serve. They have gone before in the board and received that official approval. So wastewater, this is where we're talking about the sewer line is pending for Coeur d'Alene Place 30th addition that would run up into Vista Meadows and westerly to the subject property. And then the fire department, this is pretty boilerplate language for them. They look at the site, definitely at the time of permit, to make sure that the road west surfacing, access, all those things, fire protection is taken care of. And finding B10 is that the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. Property is, is very flat. There's nothing that would prohibit it physically as far as the dirt goes. The timing of the utilities will be crucial depending on what the goals of the school district are. So here's a bird's-eye view. You guys have seen this, subject property, Hayden, Vista Meadows, a large home that is currently in the property at five acres, and then one sliver of a lot that is very similar to the three that make up this property with a single-family dwelling unit adjacent to the subject property. Here is the sidewalk, and one of the homes that is to be removed. This is the large house that is currently in the county to the south of the subject property. This is the street north Vantage Drive that would turn into Mosel and travel north-south across Prairie. And finding B11 is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. So as mentioned earlier, this area of Coeur d'Alene is growing rather quickly. Multiple annexation, subdivisions, and planned unit developments have been approved in the recent, in the last five years. And finding B10, you can see the photos and additional descriptions of the characteristics of the site. So this is the comment made by Chris Bozley, our city engineer, concerning traffic. I'll just read this into the record, is that the proposed annexation would not likely adversely affect the future Mosel Drive with regard to traffic, as it will have available capacity to accommodate the traffic generated from the subject site. There is a traffic study that is underway. I do not know if that is complete or not. That is a question that we can, can ask the applicant or the Lakes Highway District to see what the result of that was. So this is the existing land uses. This currently will be developed as an R8, but right now it is vacant. This property is, is in the county, is owned agricultural, a single-family home, and vacant property over here as well, and then single-family dwellings in the yellow and agriculture in green. This is the zoning of the area. You can see the green is R8, which is what they have requested. By "they," I mean the school district. R8 PUD with R3, as well as some commercial sites as well. Okay. So I left this basically as-is, just for transparency. Staff does recommend that an annexation agreement includes some sort of language that helps get the players to the table, I guess. We don't really have any real force or power to make any one of these groups play nice with the other, but it would be nice to have an annexation agreement that said, hey, play nice together. So that was our, our recommendation. So the applicant is requesting annexation of 7.18 acres and an R8 zoning designation. And that would conclude my staff report. If there are any questions that I can answer, I'm more than happy to.
Questions at this time for Sean? Woody?
Couple things. So this going through or not going through, right now, it has no impact on the city far as taxes, because it's not in the city right now, and when it comes in, it'll be school, so no taxes, right?
That's, yes.
Okay. So the other question, we talked about access. You were talking about this street name that I can't find on a map. Is it a future street?
Yes. Has not been constructed yet.
Okay. And, and Mr. Boz, the street guy, said that there won't be any impact, and that's because there's no access from Prairie. Is that correct?
Chris, I believe, is here. He could answer that question more directly than I can on traffic. My understanding of what he was describing is that the design of Mosel would allow the access to the site and would be able to support the vehicles that are, that are intended to go to the school.
But not off Prairie?
That I cannot answer. I don't believe it was concerning Prairie.
I guess I was looking at the schools on Ramsey and all the impacts. The schools, they take a hit hugely on traffic in front of them, around them. So I'm just, and people are yelling about traffic all the time, at least at me. I don't think they're doing that to you, are they?
They don't yell.
Okay.
They are, schools are large drivers of traffic. They generally happen early in the morning and mid-afternoon for drop-off and pickup. But the remaining times, they're, they're fairly benign.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ron?
Yeah, is there going to be any signal or anything like that out there?
That is a question for Lakes Highway District. There is a representative here. Diane may be able to speak to that, but staff cannot.
So I think maybe what we'll do is during the public comment portion of it, after the applicant has an opportunity for their presentation, then we can, through the public comment, maybe bring a representative of Lakes Highway District up to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Well, wait a minute, Sean. You don't have to hook it yet. Anyone else have any questions at this time? May have some questions later, so.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you, Sean.
Yes. Maybe this will help.
So now we will, we have time for the applicant. So we'd ask the applicant to come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
And Renata will swear you in when you're ready.
Sure. From beginning, there.
You swear that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We just have a, staff did a great job. We have a few additional slides and comments, hopefully some visuals that will help council see where this will all go.
So formally, your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we get the...
Megan O'Dowd.
Okay, there we go.
With Lyons O'Dowd and the attorney for Coeur d'Alene School District. So the, the proposal tonight is for annexation into the city of Coeur d'Alene with a zoning designation of R8. And as Sean has already said, the purpose is for construction of an elementary school. This is the visual of the site. The three parcels were purchased together for purposes of the school. As staff has already said, it is in a transitional zone. Part of the east, we have some commercial and largely residential in the immediate vicinity. Existing neighborhoods, Sunshine Meadows here, this will be Vista Meadows. This is going to be, it's a 12-lot subdivision, which is in preliminary plat approval, and Coeur d'Alene Place extensions are planned here. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, it's already outlined in the staff report. I think the most important one to be identified again on the record is the six-point, or, excuse me, goal 3.12, which is supporting quality education. There's also goals in the comprehensive plan to support civic involvement. We went to the voters in 2016 on this issue and got overwhelming support for this bonding effort, and these are, this is all a result of those bonds to build this elementary school. This will be the focus, I'm guessing, of tonight's presentation is on, this first finding is your access to public facilities and utilities. I do want to emphasize Sean's point that tonight, the decision is about annexation. So there are the four findings that council must make. We are happy to discuss the Lakes Highway District piece, but as Sean said, it is not a contingency for your findings tonight, but we will gladly discuss timing and what impact we think those might have. So water, we do have a will-serve letter from the Hayden Lake Irrigation District. Fire, the city fire department has given us written comments as well, saying that we, our current site plans are meeting applicable standards. The streets, which I have some visuals and some my subsequent slides on this, but the Prairie is to the north, and it is within the Lakes Highway District jurisdiction. We do have a pending application for an encroachment permit because our current site plan does envision coming off of Prairie Avenue and, and then heading south on Mosel, east again through Pronghorn to enter the site, which would require Lakes Highway District's approval. The, we did have a hearing last night with the highway district. It's, the, the discussion is not over. It's just been tabled. There are some additional discussions that are having with KMPO, KCAT. There's, so the discussions are ongoing. It's not officially approved. It's not denied. I think there's probably going to be some joint workshops, hopefully in the very near future, between the Lakes Highway District and the Coeur d'Alene School District representatives to try to resolve some of these issues. We did have, complete a traffic impact study. And, you know, those discussions, there was a recommendation for light as a result of that study, but the highway district, we're trying to work with the highway district to resolve their concerns with the light on Prairie and how we get to a place where the school can be there and it's safe for everybody. So, so again, my, my, our bullet is consistent with what staff has informed council, is that annexation is appropriate without this. It's not a finding for purposes of what needs to be done for annexation approval. Internal access would be through Mosel and Pronghorn, which is within the Vista Meadows subdivision, as is the city sewer. And I just wanted to point out, these aren't completed infrastructure required, or infrastructure at this point, but Vista Meadows does have an approved annex. They were annexed in several years ago, I want to say, eight or 10 years ago. Their annexation agreement does require public infrastructure to be completed prior to obtaining any building permits, and there's also approval of a Phase 1 development where they are required to, again, complete the roads, sewer, or public infrastructure. So visual, this is, I just wanted to, everyone to see, so this is what Vista Meadows Phase 1 looks like. It is a 12-lot subdivision. So as you can see, the north-south of Mosel Drive coming directly off of Prairie Avenue with east-west of Pronghorn. And this is the overlay of what it will look like. So north is here, south here. So again, Prairie Avenue, Mosel Drive, Pronghorn. This is already in an agreement, this has already been approved through Vista Meadows Phase 1. Greenstone, so Coeur d'Alene Place Extension is here to the south and has already had agreements to bring sewer to the southern end of the Vista Meadows development, and these are their plans. This is the sewer line that will be put in. And through the, in order for them, for Vista Meadows to obtain their final plat approval, they will have to bring sewer and roads to and through their development, which would bring all of the city infrastructure directly to the edge of our property. Nothing really unique about the physical characteristics of the site. It's largely flat. Intended purposes for a school, so there's nothing of uniqueness or concern there. And we intentionally went with an R8 zoning request. This was after a lot of discussion, even though it did require a special use permit application, but after a lot of discussion with staff and what they were comfortable with, because we, we wanted to be consistent with surrounding neighborhoods. So a lot of R8 and, and some lower-density R3, and then the commercial all the way to the east, which is along Ramsey there. The, the proposed use for the site, the annexation, would be consistent with the neighborhoods. We've got Sunshine Meadows, which is an established residential development. Coeur d'Alene Place established is further to the south, and then they will have, you know, a 400-plus unit development when they complete that new piece, abutting Vista Meadows. Vista Meadows is in preliminary approval stage, and they are also going for a residential use subdivision. And that concludes the presentation. I'm open for questions. We do have Jonathan Mueller from Architects West here as well, if there are some technical questions, but...
Questions for the applicant? Woody?
As, you showed us a picture of the access. Is that coming through a subdivision? The only way in and out of the school is through a subdivision. Is that correct? Is that what I saw?
Correct. So the, the proposal is not to have primary access to the school off of Prairie. There is a, there is a proposed, again, this is all conceptual right now, but the, there is a proposed service access right now off of Prairie for deliveries and, you know, kitchen staff deliveries and for emergency access. It is a write-in, write-out, which was actually done at the request of the Lakes Highway District, and there have been several modifications, such as the, we have fully, we, we have intentionally, in our conceptual plan so far, have changed it so the bike path doesn't connect continuously to the south to try to preserve the safety for the Lakes Highway District concerns with getting, keeping, keeping kid drop-off where it's intended. But again, that, those are pretty specific things that would come up at building permit application time, but we're...
I wouldn't want to live in that subdivision. That's all I can think. It doesn't look right. It's not, my brain is not absorbing that, but you guys make it work. I think it's great.
Any other questions? Maybe some later down the road, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
It's time to open up a public testimony. This would be an opportunity if council wishes to... This would be an opportunity if council wishes to ask questions from any representative of the Lakes Highway District. Does council have any questions for Lakes Highway District to have them come up? Nobody's raising their hand, so.
I will just make a comment. So the issue is, if I understand it correctly, is a traffic signal on prairie. Prairie, I'm speaking as a KMPO member here. Prairie is a major arterial east-west in this county, the first one that's north of I-90. If anything happens on I-90, all that traffic's going to go to prairie. Right now, prairie was designed so that it effectively moves traffic east and west. The signals are far enough apart, and I don't know what the distance is, but they're far enough apart that traffic can move quite efficiently. The issue for KMPO and for Eastside, or for Lakes, sorry, I keep doing that, I used to live in Eastside, is that we put a signal in here, it's 1,600 feet from the Ramsey intersection, and it will affect traffic. The way we look at it from KMPO is that prairie is an $11 million investment in infrastructure to effectively move cars from one end of the county to the other. And to, it has to be considered very carefully if you're going to add another signal on prairie with regards to that investment in infrastructure and also the movement of traffic. And if I have anything wrong, let me know.
But again, Dan, that's, that's not an issue that's before us.
And that's absolutely not an issue that's before us.
Right.
I'm giving you that information only. Our annexation stops on prairie. So whatever happens on prairie is between the school district and Lakes Highway. And what we're concerned about is just exactly what Woody said, which is the traffic in that neighborhood. That's pretty much all we care about as far as that's concerned. But the bigger picture, and what you're going to read about in the paper and stuff, is regarding that, that traffic signal and access off prairie, which, this is just information only, that should not be a part of our decision.
So I do not have anyone else on my list for a public comment. Anyone that has not signed up, that wishes to give any public comment on this item tonight? If I don't see anyone, then I will close the public testimony portion of this. I don't see any other need for a follow-up, unless council would like anyone else to come back up for follow-up questions. If you don't have that, then we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of A-3-18. A proposed 7.18 acre annexation from County Agriculture to C-R eight, City R eight, located at 2008, 1950 and 1914 Prairie Avenue. Applicant Coeur d'Alene City School District to direct staff to negotiate an annexation agreement and to develop the necessary findings in order.
Second motion and a second further discussion. Amy?
One point of clarification, do we need to, or does that include that our recommendation that the entities work together to problem solve? Sean had that slide up.
Troy or Sean, would that be considered to be in the findings in order? So you had that one slide up, the recommended.
I actually don't think we have the legal authority to do that, so.
Yeah, okay.
We can encourage them, though.
We don't condition annexations, we do annexation agreements. So it's just a request from staff that that become part of the annexation agreement.
Okay. We can wag our fingers and say, play nice.
And just as an FYI for Woody's question about the lots that are here, they are proposed and, you know, nobody knows for sure until they actually build, but they're all proposed to be duplexes. So they're not envisioned to be forever homes, they're fairly transient in nature.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Now we will move on to, we have vacation. It's about time. Dennis Grant is going to be our closer tonight. So we have a vacation of right-of-way adjoining lots one through three, block one, Booth Edition, city of Coeur d'Alene. Dennis, you're taking it away.
Okay.
It's too early for a Christmas vacation.
Going to Hawaii, right? All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to be here on this fine evening. We have two vacations coming before you tonight. And the first one, vacation 18-06. Okay, this is over by I-90 between Eighth and Ninth Street. If you recall, last year, we had a vacation in this same area on Annie Avenue there, and it accommodated the property there to the west of the highlighted area. Now this property is to the south of the highlighted area, which is the other half of Annie Avenue. The requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the city of Coeur d'Alene in the Bora Third Edition plat in 1954, and the Public Works Committee unanimously approved the action at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 8th, 2018, and directed staff to proceed forward. The vacation of the requested right-of-way would not have any future impact on the city and would add approximately 802 square feet to the county tax roll. The purpose of this request is to vacate the unused street right-of-way. Annie Avenue is a dead-end street that was cut off when Interstate 90 was built. It is unimproved and not needed. The city council should, the recommendation is that the city council should approve the vacation action per Idaho Code Section 50-1306, and to vacate the property to the applicant Shelley R. Brunna, trustee for the Ralph Rudolph Rash Irrevocable Trust. We did send out some notices, 33, and I received three responses. One against, and two were neutral. I do have another, let me show you another document here. So this, this is the official document that will be recorded with the ordinance, and it shows a little more clear, the parcel, that's parcel A up there, that's going to be, that's proposed to be vacated. That's the southern half of Annie Avenue. Yeah, so any questions?
Questions for Dennis? Okay. Don't see any questions right now, thank you. So this is a legislative hearing, is that correct, Renata, or is it quasi-judicial? I get those mixed up.
Legislative.
Legislative hearing, okay. And so I will open public comment. I have a list here. I do have two folks on here, Roger Foster and Jackie Foster. It says that they're in opposition, doesn't indicate whether they wanted to testify. Roger and Jackie, are you here tonight? Would you like to testify? Would not like.
No, I just wanted to make.
Oh, if you, if you, you can come on up, you can come on up. Do you want to swear them in, Renata? Do you need to go through that? Okay, okay. Yeah, you, go ahead and give a comment.
I was just curious as to.
Oh, your name for the record, please.
Oh, my name is Jackie Foster.
Okay.
And we are lot 12 in the Booth Edition. We were just wondering, our neighbor on this side of us, on the north side of us, last year was given the little small section up there, the little diamond shape, and she was told if he went for this, lot A, parcel A, that she would be given half of that.
Okay.
And she didn't show, but we were just curious.
All right.
And there's been surveyors out there, she's been trying to get her section, and he's blocked it all the way.
Okay. Maybe we'll have Dennis come up, and he can address that, that question. So I guess the question, oh, Mr. Foster, did you wish to come up and speak? Are you okay? Or do you want to come up and speak, or you're fine? Okay. So Dennis, if you could address her question, please, and her question was on that triangle piece.
It's because it's across the street.
Yes, so last year, Carol Ann Curtis, who's the owner of that parcel, came in for a vacation.
Did you point with a mouse so you don't know what you're talking about?
Yep, I was just going to.
Thanks.
Do that. And her request was this triangle piece, I'm going to, I'm, this triangle piece I'm trying to follow here. Everybody see that? Okay. And that's the area that was Annie Avenue and a portion of the alleyway that, that was vacated last year. And I did contact her today, and to address the question, let me get my other glasses on. She also emailed me, but I wanted to call her to confirm. She said, I don't want to take the half of what is being vacated that is next to my property.
Okay.
So she doesn't have any desire to take half of this parcel. And there was an agreement, a verbal agreement back in the, back then, that she was going to take that one piece, and then the Rash Trust was going to take this other piece. So she, but she wanted to confirm that. She said, asked if she needed to be here tonight. I said, no, I got it on your email, that she doesn't have any desire for that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So that should answer the question.
Dennis, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Normally, when we do right-of-way, we do split it, right? Half goes one side, half goes the other? Is that the norm?
That is correct. Let me, in the code, oh, highlighted it right here.
You're working way too hard, Ben, way too hard.
No, this is, great question, Woody, actually, this is good, good for people to know. I'm just going to go ahead and read it, quote it. Provided further that whenever any street, avenue, alley, or lane shall be vacated, the same shall revert to the owner of the adjacent real estate, one half on each side thereof, like you just said, or as the city council deems in the best interest of the adjoining properties. So in this case, we have the adjoining owner saying she does not want that property, so that's why the proposal is for this trapezoidal area to go south. Good, great question, thank you for asking.
Thanks for bringing that paperwork to you, Dan.
I was ready for that question.
Right.
You're getting so good at this, Dennis.
I know.
I tell you, if it wasn't so late at night, you know?
When you get 11 of them in a year, and there's normally one or two, yeah.
So is there any one, I don't have anyone else on this list to, to give any public testimony. Would you like to come back up and say something here?
I'm a project manager for the city Coeur d'Alene.
So if we, if you could just give your name, name for the record, please, sir?
I'm Roger Foster.
Okay.
My question isn't about this parcel. On this, you have this here, it says vacated ordinance.
Right.
Now is this vacated?
Yes.
That part of Annie is vacated.
Yep. Back in the, yeah, answered, uh-oh.
There's a section, sorry, I gotta switch glasses. Let me use the cursor. The portion he's talking about is right here.
Okay.
Okay, so that piece was vacated back in the, I believe it was the late 50s, when I-90 went through, it cut off some of the pieces of these lots and made them pretty small. And so there must have been an agreement to vacate that piece, because Annie didn't go through to add, to add to lot 11 some square footage to their lot, because it's such a small lot.
So Annie Street is not vacated yet out here?
No. No. You still.
That was my main thing, because I was kind of confused on the way this was.
Oh, yeah, no, you still have access, your house is here. You have 20-foot there, and a 20-foot alley all the way down.
Right.
Yep, so you have all the access that you.
But they're not, it's not vacated and given?
No, no.
This is still city property there.
That's right. You have total use of that.
Oh, yeah?
Yep.
Now, so you just maintain that alley?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So at this time, I will close the public, unless there's any other questions of council, I will close the public testimony portion and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 18-1025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill Number 18-1025. An ordinance of the city of Coeur d'Alene vacating a portion of Annie Avenue right-of-way, according to the plat of Bora Third Edition, recorded in Book D., Page 52, in the Office of the Recorder of Cootney County, Idaho, generally described as that portion of the Annie Avenue right-of-way adjoining the north line of Lot 1, Block 1, Booth Edition, in the city of Coeur d'Alene, located in the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 12, Township 50 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian. City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Move to adopt Council Bill 18-1025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. So now, our final piece of business for the, tonight, is V-18-08. Vacation of the right-of-way, Seltice Way, adjoining a portion of government lots one and two, in the northeast quarter of Section 10, Township 50 North NR, I don't know what that will stand for, four west in the city of Coeur d'Alene. Dennis, you're up again.
All right, definitely a tongue twister on that one.
Yeah.
So this is, in related to the Atlas Waterfront property, off the, on the south side of Seltice Way, and, sorry, I don't have a color picture up there. This is what was provided. Anyway, it's, it would be to the east of Atlas Road, up to the Centennial Trail, right there, by the Riverstone area there. So the decision point for today is, should the city vacate a portion of right-of-way along the south side of Seltice Way, east of Atlas Road, to the applicant, City Coeur d'Alene, and Ignite CDA? The four-lane divided highway known as Seltice Way was originally constructed in 1926 as U.S. Highway 10, with the portion from Coeur, from Coeur d'Alene to the Idaho-Washington boundary being replaced by I-90 in 1971. Two other vacations have been approved in the past on the north side of Seltice Way. The Public Works unanimously approved this on October 8th of 2018, and the vacation of the requested right-of-way would not have any future financial impact on the city and would add approximately, approximately 2.3 acres to the future council or county tax roll. It would be a benefit to the municipality as tax revenue in the future, there again, to the landowner, future landowner of those lots, future lots, everything's future on this one. The purpose of this request is to vacate the unused portion of right-of-way along the south side of Seltice Way, east of Atlas Road. Seltice Way was recently reconstructed, widened, and rebuilt, and as a part of this construction, a bike path was added along the south side of Seltice Way. The applicants are proposed to, proposing to vacate a portion of Seltice Way, which is two feet south of the current trail, as it's shown on the exhibit. The recommendation, city council should approve the vacation action per Idaho Code Section 50-1306, and to vacate the property to the applicant. And we sent out 23 certified letters, and had zero come back with, so, nothing to report there.
Questions for Dennis? Okay, not seeing any questions. I do have a list of anyone wishing to give public comment. I will open the public comment portion of this. I don't have anyone's name on this list. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to give public testimony on this topic? Seeing none, I will then close the public comment portion of that and look for council action.
Oh.
Long night, yeah.
So we're giving ourselves this dirt.
Well, in a sense, it's, we're following the process that's for the Idaho statutes.
I love it.
Because, yeah, because in, in the right-of-way, it's, it's sure, it's given to us through whatever method, through a plat or through whatever method it's given to us, but then we have to follow the state statute process to give it to the adjacent property owner, which is ourselves, yes.
I love that. So, with that, I will move to dispense the rule of Council Bill 18-1026 by, once, by title only, please.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 18-1026, an ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene vacating a portion of Seltice Way right-of-way, generally described as a parcel of land adjoining the northerly boundary of government lots one and two of the northeast quarter of Section 10 Township 50 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian, City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for a publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried.
To, I'm sorry. I would like to move to adopt Bill, Council Bill 18-1026.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? One final roll call, Renata, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to there being no other business, motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck to all candidates tonight.
Yes, thank you.
And we are adjourned.